Call to order, meeting of Board of Selectmen. Invite everyone to join me for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first order of business is public comment. I will invite anyone who is here to give a public comment to come to the podium and give us your name and address and make your public comment. Any comments? Great. Mr. Lucidello, thank you.
My name is Tom Lucidello. I live at 99 Middlesex Street here in the beautiful town of North Andover. And I'm here today only to say thank you to our Town Manager, Mr. Mailer, and to the Board of Selectmen. This gas crisis has really been very disruptive to many of us. I will say that I'm far more fortunate, even though I'm in the high-impact zone, than lots of folks, including Rosemary, who was very directly impacted. One of the things when things go very, very bad that's so terribly important is to have leaders in our town help direct the effort and make sure that we are brought whole again as quickly and as safely as possible. I can tell you that, at least on Middlesex Street, it has been a hubbub of activity. I have met workers from Virginia, Indiana, all across the country. They've all been terrific. The paving work has begun, and the holes that have been all over the street. So I know this is a huge effort, and I really appreciate it. And the thing that I like the most, and I really want to congratulate you and thank you for, in terms of the leadership that you've provided, is that you have thoroughly researched all of the issues. You've made sure that we've been handled in a safe and efficient manner. And I think we'll be whole faster than, not as fast as we want it to be, but faster than some of the projections. And so I just wanted to be here to say thank you for that, and certainly for, on behalf of my neighborhood, everybody is singing your praises. And we're still a little chilly, but we thank you and continue the good work. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Tom.
It is amazing, like there's an army of people who've come to help. From all over the country, Louisiana, Texas, like you said, Kentucky, Ohio, I mean, just everywhere. And it means a lot. It means a lot when you see all these people here working to help us get back online. And it's very encouraging. So we're grateful for the help that we've been getting.
And I'll add one more thing. What's also been so rewarding is talking with all of these folks from all over the country who've sung the praises of the people in North Andover about how kind our residents have been to them as well. So I think it speaks well for our community. It makes me all the more proud to be a resident of this town. And again, lots of things to smile about. We'll all smile a little bit more when things are warm again.
Right.
Thank you for coming in to say that, Tom. It means a lot.
Anyone else here for public comment? All right. Moving on, we have the approval of our minutes. Everyone read the minutes from October 9th. Any questions or comments on the minutes?
May I move a favor?
Second. All in favor? Aye. That's right. All right. Four to zero approved. Next, we have an introduction of new staff member. Very exciting.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Denise Casey is our new Assistant Town Manager. Here to introduce herself. We're very, very fortunate. I think the only thing we're not fortunate about was you could use Denise this week, as opposed to a couple of weeks from now. Denise has an extensive municipal background. She is an expert, a subject matter expert on human resources, is the go-to person, quite frankly, in the industry when there are questions in that field. But she has a broader background than that. She's been serving as the Assistant in Wilmington, a town very similar to North Andover in many ways. She's leaving Wilmington, their loss, our gain, to come here to take on the responsibilities. She'll be the Division Director of Community Services, Veterans Recreation Senior Center, who am Miss Library, and take on other responsibilities. I'm very excited. I've known Denise for many years. We served on the MMPA, Mass Municipal Personnel Association, the Board of Directors some many years back. We're very, very fortunate. She brings a demeanor and a style which is positive, something that's very important in every organization. So I'm very, very excited to introduce Denise Casey and tell her to hurry up and get here.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much. I had the pleasure to meet some of you a few weeks back when I had my interview. And I can't tell you how excited I am to come to work here in North Andover and to bring my years of expertise and my passion for local government. And quite frankly, the words of the gentleman are exactly why I love my job and I love to do what we do, because we do directly serve the people and we make a difference in people's lives. And that's what gets me up every day. Every day's a different day. It's an exciting day, and I look forward to bringing that here to North Andover. And I look forward to working with all of you, and for Andrew and for Laurie and everyone else. So thank you for inviting me to come here.
Thank you very much. We're excited to have your expertise.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to governmental reports. First, we'll have an update as we have every meeting since this crisis has happened on the gas incident.
This one will be brief for our. So I wanted to do a couple of things. Certainly, really bill myself to answer any questions the Board has. So off any chart, we're not doing a formal presentation, is that the question is often raised, what we're doing, what you're doing, what my office and others in Town Hall are doing as it relates to responding to residents. And as you know, it is consuming professionally most of the time we have, I certainly can say all of the time we have up here at Town Hall, but I know for you folks similarly, we do everything from receive concerns of residents about claims, the processing time of claims, maybe even the response by the claims adjuster themselves. We interact often with businesses who may have specific concerns to get a return, obtain daily briefings and meetings to understand exactly where the project is in terms of status. We have questions about whether or not, why a meter now needs to go outside as opposed to inside the house, what that means when they put one of those nice steel and concrete bollards next to the meter, trying to address that and get staff in those directions. We deal with housing concerns and complaints. Folks are struggling with getting into housing, or folks who've been situated in housing, which at the time was appropriate, but might be 30 miles away. One of them works in Boston, one of them works in New Hampshire, two kids in North Andover. Does that make sense? Can we find other alternatives and try to work with them to make sure that we get them into the appropriate housing? We monitor social media to see what the concerns are, if for some reason the resident just can't communicate in other means, and this is the method by which they communicate. And so we're constantly working with the folks that are on the ground restoring the gas service, the leadership of that particular group with the Board and with residents, to make ourselves available to answer questions, because sometimes people would rather come in and talk to us, or talk to you, rather than call a 1-800 number. And I think they recognize that. They recognize the importance of the Board and the responsiveness that you have to them, and they, we are funneling those kinds of comments and concerns and addressing them literally every day. Laurie's directly involved in that. We do have staff from Columbia Gas who is here, who we can reach out to and get specific answers. So for the residents, if you have specific concerns, we hand out at least half a dozen to a dozen a day, specific concerns. We are directing those concerns and monitoring them, make sure that people feel happy about the response. A lot of them today were on housing, because it's getting colder. So concern about housing real. So that's what we're doing on a daily basis. It consumes, certainly for the Town Manager's Office, literally 100% of the day. And so, thank God, we have a lot of other folks who do really great work, and they've picked up the slack to make sure that those other things that have to get done, get done. I can tell you, for the Building Department and the Inspection Services side, consumes 100% of their day, monitoring those things, taking, making sure that the equipment that goes in is safe, coordinating additional staff that's been added to our regional initiative to make sure that's all working. They are then extraordinary night and day to make sure that things are being done and that things are being done correctly. So we are spending, you know, a significant portion of our time to make sure that all that works. And I want residents to know that. I know that we are here. So whether it's through email or a telephone call, was simply showing up, we're to try to help them navigate through a very complicated process and resolve their problems. I think key milestones to some of those would be, first, the confusion or complaint that there would not be alternative energy sources provided. I think we're at the center of pushing Columbia Gas to make sure that they provided those alternative energy sources. When there was questions about whether some of those alternatives would be removed, returned, repossessed, otherwise moved back out of the houses, I think we sat at the center of the discussion to make sure that our residents knew that if it was installed, it was to stay installed. And I think we worked with, you know, more than a dozen examples where we interjected ourselves, communicated with Columbia Gas, and quite frankly, in the broader conversation, changed the dialogue in the region to make sure that our residents and the residents of all the residents impacted throughout great alarms were positively dealt with. And I think we've had strong influence in that regard, and we continue to influence the process however we can to make sure people are, feel as good as they can about a very complicated circumstance. So that's what we do every day. Some specific data about what's going on. You know, the successes are that as of today, 37.2 of 44 miles of pipe had been replaced. And that pipeline replacement process is ahead of schedule, is being performed well. One of the real challenges, it sounds like an interesting one early, is coordinating details around that work. We now have developed a good system with the North Andover PD to make sure that we meet first thing in the morning with the construction crews, to make sure they're assigned in a way that there is the proper supervision over every one of those construction projects.
So it's ahead of schedule, they provide, is that what you're saying?
This is a gas-only. This is just gas. So they haven't, I think everybody can pull up their own particular properties on the map. So the map was yanked, because there was some challenges with, I mean, the schedule. You can go online and look up your property address. I think most folks will see on the gas side, the gas main side, that it's either the same date or slightly better than that. I'd expect most of the gas main work to be completed by, you know, around Halloween. Could be done a couple of days after that. So the gas main work, the gas main replacement work is moving quickly. We've often been asked the question, the Board has asked the same thing, after that's done, you know, the trench repaved, they fill those holes. I've said it to this Board, and I'll state it publicly, it is our position that every one of those roadways should be repaved curb-to-curb. And that may not be a conversation for today, but it is our position that that is the right thing to do for all of our residents, and we continue to communicate that, and will continue to communicate that.
But can you just, so the road installation is done, but the installation into the homes?
Yeah, so I'm going to talk about that. No, I appreciate that. So the next piece of that is the 6,100 gas, 6,100 gas services in the entire three-community region, just the connection from the main to the side of the house. Of those today, 3503 of the 6,100 are done. That is at least on schedule. I'll use the term at least on schedule. That's going well. All the meters need to be replaced. It's what's generated some of this confusion or questions in the neighborhood, because you've had an inside meter that's now been placed outside, because within five feet of a driveway, they now have concrete and steel bollards around where that install's going to be. Some folks were surprised by that, and we've been trying to work case-by-case with Columbia Gas to see if they have to be placed there. I think most folks in homes that have seen new service, even if you weren't in this impacted area, may realize by now looking at their meter, the meters have to be outside and they need this kind of protection. But for residents who haven't had that, it's a change, and we're working with them on that. So that piece of the project is also sort of at or slightly ahead of schedule. The last piece is the home, house-ready piece, and I can tell you, they are behind schedule. And that has been the real challenge for any number of reasons. I put out the daily briefings to the entire community, the daily briefings we get from Columbia Gas. If you look at the math and you look at the data, you can see the challenges. I think on the most productive day, one of the more productive days they had was yesterday, Sunday. There was 114 house-ready completions out of over 7,000 that need to be done. You just need to sit and do the math and realize their real challenge is trying to get that stuff done. Some of the things that they're encountering when doing that, you, because Columbia Gas has agreed that all of the boilers need to be replaced, those boilers need to be replaced. If you go into a home, you may find that there need to be some code enhancements to get that boiler in. Maybe you currently feed your, the exhaust from your boiler is going into your chimney, and maybe that has to change, or a new flue liner has to go in. Maybe the type of piping has to be changed. Currently, if you change a boiler, you have to abate the asbestos that may have supported that boiler, insulated that boiler. These are some of the difficulties that groups are bumping into. So as they go in with plumbers and gas fitters, the time spent in every home is extremely long. It's hours upon hours to get that work complete. So in addition to what I would certainly identify is been a slow start in terms of the logistics of moving this machine forward, that it's gotten better, not ideal. You add on to that the home-by-home differences and the code requirements for that, and it is absolutely slowing the house-ready piece down to a point that certainly has been concerned. We continue to monitor that.
So for boilers, boilers and furnaces, brand-new furnaces and boilers for any requests?
Yes.
And that means brand-new, that doesn't mean refurbished, right?
Correct.
There was a rumor going around that some people were getting refurbished ones. Is that?
Well, we encountered that. That was last week or the week before, probably. Like, every week presents a different issue. There's some questions about that, and one of the things we really pushed on was, we felt that replacing the boiler was, from a safety perspective, was the right course. You know, is there some debate around that? There is some debate around that. The net, the level of resource you have to bring into someone's house to fix the sort of moving components of a boiler is a different level of resources than removing the entire boiler and getting the licensed plumber in there to change the piping and anything else that has to go with that in terms of venting and related items. At this point, Columbia Gas has agreed that they will replace all burners and furnaces, water heaters, water heaters, dryers and stuffs.
With brand-new?
Yeah, they're all brand-new. Yep. And I have posted on the town's website, as this group knows and others knows, others know, we have posted a prolific amount of information to residents. I know that, quite frankly, can be almost overwhelming, and so we're trying to find other resources, sources to get that information out. But we have posted actually the list of every one of the appliances that are the replacement appliances, the Keisab boilers, the type of air, split systems, not split systems, excuse me, combi systems that are out there, furnaces, the type of hot water heater. All of those, we've listed the various kinds of choices, not choices, but options that may end up in the house. So we've done information like that. But as of today, that is a replacement of a boiler, not a retrofit.
What about the cost of, if you have to have like asbestos debating, or they have to have a new flue liner put in?
Or sprinkler over the?
Is that, are they covering that cost too?
Yeah.
They are.
Absolutely.
That's awesome.
But they're doing the work, likely doing the work.
They're doing the work.
So as you can imagine, and this is, you know, this is where the rubber meets the road, and it is a real challenge as you look at, and I encourage everybody to look at these daily briefings and just look at the numbers. So on Sunday, there were 387 plumbers in town, 471 gas fitters, 132 electricians, 380-some-odd inspectors working for Columbia Gas overseeing sort of that work. I'm sure I've missed some numbers, but that's a lot of people in a six-square-mile area between the three communities. But because of the late work and all of the sort of effort that has to go into doing that and doing it right and being code-compliant, they completed 114 homes. Simple math on that tells you how difficult the challenge, yeah, for a lot of that. So, and some of that's code issues and related items. So productivity, if you look at the productivity slide, is one of those things. I think you'll hear more from me in the next couple of days about productivity, because I think it represents the biggest impediment.
And of course, the homeowner needs to be home while they're doing it. They're just not going to give them the keys.
Yeah, we've got a couple of stories that wasn't the case, but lie-in lies the homeowner should be home, and homeowners are working with folks. And I think that I do appreciate for the people that are in the street doing the work, either the pipeline work or the service worker in the homes. They're faced with the challenge that someone may not be home when they thought they were home, or vice versa, the call wasn't made. You know, those are all challenges. So for some reason, you don't get to it, and all of a sudden, you come back and your home wasn't completed, or it wasn't, you know, certainly have stories where folks, you know, plumbers or folks went in to do boiler and the full work, and it took a day and a half, two days, two days plus.
That's not unusual, actually.
If you think about it, if you're just doing it in your own home without all this going on, it's substantial work. So we have good news. The gas main's going to be replaced, and it's going to be replaced in the next two weeks, I believe it will completely done. The service works similarly. I will say for today, but I'm sure by the end of the week, I'll have more definitive position. I am extremely concerned about the in-house work being able to be completed.
So if the in-house work is delayed, that still means that these people don't have gas to heat. And right now, we're looking at it until November 19th anyways.
Yes.
We're going to start having freezing, whether consistently enough that people's pipes are going to be compromised, right? And so we've begun conversations with Columbia about, they're looking at certain neighborhoods that may potentially fall beyond, even around the 19th, winterizing pipes, so that they're not dealing with an even bigger mess?
Yeah, I think, again, it goes to the, we all think, for those of us who have experience with homes, we realize every home has its own, call it a personality, but I'm not quite sure that's the right term, meaning its own nuances, its own sort of needs, its own challenges. I think the focus right now has been to commit resources to get these folks heat. I do think that everybody recognizes, I always use the example, you know, to your point, I happen to have a pellet stove. Then one of the real faults with having a pellet stove, and for the folks who have installed pellet stoves, those are saying, so if you didn't have one, and you put one in as an alternative heating source, one of the successes we've had in the last couple of weeks is saying, then they get to keep that, even when the gas goes in and you get a new gas boiler. But what I've said to some folks who have, you know, very happy with their pellet stove is I said, be very careful about pellet stoves. They heat in such a way as you feel, because there's more of a local heat source, and there's not piping in every room, you feel like the house is warm, but you get a far-off corner in your house that is on an outside wall. I know a lot of people prone to some level of water pipes breaking, because they assumed that pellet stove was sort of a whole-house heater, but it heats in a different way than running a back baseboard across every, you know, outside wall. So those are all problems that'll exist, I will tell you, just thinking about this logically, simply the roadway work. If we want the roads redone in a way we should all expect, there's no way in heck that's happening before a minimum of the spring, right? So there is getting people in their homes and warm, and then there is what some would refer to as punchless items or day-two items. Those day-two items, I think that's a growing list. And the day-two items will be items that will exist in some form or another for the homeowners in the impacted area for a period of time. This doesn't end on the 19th regardless.
And I wasn't suggesting that, but more for those homes, protecting people's assets, because I know that this started with fires, but I mean, the cold weather can just as easily wreak havoc in people's.
Yes. We recognize that. So it's a fair point to communicate, and we will. We've been really emphasizing the alternative housing. Our bigger, bigger, that's not fair, a substantial concern we have is that folks get not comfortable, but they're so prone to want to stay home, like, we all are like that, we don't want to leave our house, that we stay and we stay and we stay, and we convince ourselves day after day after day that it's okay, except the weather gets worse. And so every day, when it's two degrees colder, we say we should stay. And the reality is that that is our greatest concern. We're contemplating now, working, you know, with our staff, is going door-to-door on folks that, we've already done some of that with outreach, but doing a broader outreach with folks, we feel that may be at some risk, because the tendency is to want to stay where you are. And I think in the long term, right now, our gravest concern is that whatever date it is, that folks stay when they should leave. And we're seeing more folks paying attention to that, but we want them to take the safest route they can. And so we are getting good response from the travel trailer location. We're up to 31 families. I think that'll be fully occupied at 60 within the next week or so, is based on how we're traveling, excuse the pun. We have additional backup trailers located in another section of town that we will mobilize onto Grogan's, add up to another 20 of those trailers. We think we'll probably need them in the next couple of weeks, and we're prepared to do that. And as, I don't have that slide with me, but there's more than 4,600 hotel rooms that have been secured with assistance of MEMR. MEMR's Mass Emergency Management is running the housing end of this. They've secured more than 4,600 rooms. About half of those are currently occupied, and I would expect that that number's going to increase. And I think MEMR is prepared to try to increase the number of available hotel rooms. There are also 166 apartments that are available, only a handful of those currently occupied. And there is a shelter location. I visited the shelter last week. A thousand beds. It's prepared and set up to serve 1,000 meals three times a day. It has lactation rooms, small area for pets, separate male and female locations in addition to family locations. It has a separate area for socialization and TVs and those kind of things. It's a really remarkable site. Right now, that would be, appears to be the site of last resort for folks, but they should know that it exists, and so that if they have to go there, it is a safe place and a place that they can stay, even if they view it as a warming location, a place to get out of the cold. So we're working on all those, and I certainly appreciate the lead on the suggestion around pipes. We'll get some kind of FAQ out about that, not so distant future.
So the RVs and the hotel rooms, that's another great example of where. I feel like there are people that are really frustrated by it, because, you made the point, people don't want to leave their homes. And so when they finally get to the point where they say they want to leave their home, to have them jump through hoops, and that's not us, that's not the town, but I, I mean, as we said last week, you're the vehicle to get to Columbia Gas.
Absolutely.
And there was a gentleman who yesterday morning was brought to our attention that, you know, they sent him, rather than his family of five, you know, from Waverly Road, go to one of the vacant RVs, they sent him to a hotel in Revere. And, you know, he spoke to somebody from Columbia Gas, whoever their rep was yesterday. They said they'd get back to him last night. He still hasn't heard from them just before this meeting. Like, so, I mean, when you're dealing with cold and you're commuting from Revere, that you're really old really quick, and when you're waiting for someone to place you in housing, I mean, it's frustrating. And I know that, I hope that people know that we hear that, but at the same time, I feel helpless. And if I feel helpless, then I'm, I'm fine, I'm in my house. I can only imagine the helplessness they feel when they're also having to navigate trying to get their house, their actual house repaired.
Yeah, we hear that. We hear really good stories, and we certainly hear stories that trouble us and concern us and make us scratch our heads all at the same time. And I think using that example, which you have forwarded to me and others, which I get on a regular basis, we have been able to work with Columbia Gas to solve those problems. Maybe, I really wish the problems didn't exist, if they sort of solved themselves, but sometimes we all know that's not quite how it works. And so dealing, managing 5,000 rooms and three RV locations and who you get on the 1-800 number, all seem to play a factor in whether or not you got the right response, some very quick, some not so much. But I do think that, and the residents should know, and I know the Board knows, we're helping resolve those problems, that one included. We're helping resolve those problems and address them on a daily basis. Sometimes it takes us 24 hours, but we are finding that they are responsive when we connect and say, here is the issue, we need to hear back. We're finding that that communication is good. It's not quite as good when you're calling a number and somewhere in the Midwest, it has a 1-800 number, and it's just not always the ideal connection, right? And that's what they're dealing with.
Do you have a direct line?
Yes.
So you have a contact that you call when you have an emergency?
On both the claims issues, the construction issues, and the non-claim, non-construction issues like housing. Yes. Yep. There's another thing that we advocated for. So there was not people in the buildings. There were not resources. And the three of us, the, let me stop to say that the work of the mayor and the Town Manager and the other community has been fantastic, have learned a lot from them. They work hard for the people that they serve, they're invested in that. I just had a meeting with, a couple of meetings with them today. But it helps as a group to try to figure these things out. And this, that's a pretty good example where, three things. One was advocating to make sure that we had the kind of resources in the buildings. Two is advocated for what we call zone commanders, who are the in-street construction people that we can go to with specific questions when it's construction-related, sometimes, you know, the sort of where do they put the meter type thing. And we also have an in, a direct access to a claims representative who can look up the status of claims. So when a claim is held up, they can see what's happening with that claim and facilitate outcomes on that claim, or at least take what we're getting as feedback and put that into the knot-hole to figure out the problem. So we have claims direct access, we have in-street construction access, and we have same for basically everything else that sort of falls into that pool. And we've recently advocated for an abundance bin of sorts to weigh into claims when there's a claims dispute. So a resident ends up in a dispute with Columbia, and, you know, we don't know the difference. We've got a third party who is advocating on behalf, weighing in and getting involved to make sure that that dispute is resolved in a way that is justifiable. So we've advocated for that kind of resource, that the, excuse me, that the residents may or may not be aware of. As relates to claims data, there's been 28,931 calls received at the toll-free number for the three communities. 94% of those claims are residential, leaving about 6% on the business side. 38% of the claims have received more than one payment, so sometimes folks get payment, I change my water heater, I get a payment, I change my boiler on my own. By the way, residents can go off if they can afford to do that, have the resources. They can schedule their own plumber to change their boilers out. They do not have to wait. That's reimbursable. The cost of install, you call your adjuster, you get a price, price is inclusive of whatever's necessary, you have your plumber install it, and all the costs associated with that install, you get it pre-approved, and they send you a check for that reimbursement. And that is working as a process. For some folks, they feel more comfortable than waiting for the Columbia Gas option, or whether or not the choices are going to give them are appropriate. Even if gas is in the street and you get the boiler, you still need the system to be relit. So someone from Columbia needs to get in there and make sure that everything's ready to go, and then all of this needs plumbing and electrical inspectors. So we have dozens of inspectors from all over the state who are licensed inspectors reviewing all this work in the homes to make sure that's appropriate. So we have several inspectors in our town in addition to our own highly qualified staff. There have been 3,047 claims received from residents and businesses in North Andover specifically. 2,198 of those claims remain active. Approximately $4,770,000 as of yesterday has been paid to claims to North Andover residents. And that's not counting sort of the in-kind stuff. We have Laundromat that's going to see a full replacement of all their equipment, we've got businesses that have seen an involvement in terms of equipment replacement and the like. We've been more fortunate, I think, than the other two communities in terms of business restoration. Promote Today, Shadi's, who else we want to promote? Anybody we can--
Chama.
Chama, we, you know, buddies, Amiches, our businesses, they're focusing on our businesses. There were 23 businesses all hooked to gas in First and Main. I believe all of those now have heat, and all of them have working boilers. Some of them had hot water because they had electric. So, we are sort of ahead of the curve in terms of the business impact. I would note at the time that if, the Andover business corridor is, I hate to use decimated because I think they'll bounce back, but the impact on the north, on the Andover business corridor on Main Street has been profound, all of their business corridors without. And I think we should think of those folks just like the folks who don't have heat in other communities. So I think we're working in that regard. We've changed the claim center hours. Our claim center throughput has decreased to at or below 25 on a daily basis, in some cases as low as five. Folks have filed their claims, they can do all that now on the telephone number, we're seeing less activity at the claim center. They will remain open for quite a while, continue to operate out of that facility for probably a couple of months in one form or another, but we're generally seeing the claims reduced, because everybody's filed the claim and have a claim number, right?
Yeah, so the 2,100-plus claims that are still open, how those people that have maybe received some kind of a payment and there's, they've still got additional payments coming, that's why they're still open?
Correct.
Are there not people that haven't seen anything, they just--
Correct. What's likely happened is they opened the claim, maybe they changed, maybe they haven't done anything yet, and Columbia's going to do it all, and that claim may change. Maybe they're changing their own hot water heater and got a payment for that, but there hasn't been a final decision on the boiler, as an example, whether they're changing it to someone else. So there is a standard set of appliances. If you had a higher piece of equipment, I want the higher piece of equipment. If you had a higher piece of equipment than what's being offered, which is not the low rung on the ladder, but you want to replace what in kind what you have, you can go do that. You have an open claim, they'll reimburse you for the model you had, even if that model was twice the price as the item that's out there. So, given the fact that there's more than 4.7 million has been issued as checks to North Andover residents, a significant amount of these dollars are paid, I think in most cases, they have multiple claims under one adjustment. Other questions for me?
Well, adding to that, just this comment that, I mean, so often, our elderly, they're a tough breed.
Yes, they are.
And they don't want to leave their homes, so everyone does need to check in on them.
Yes.
And encourage them to get to a warm place. I mean, this, this type of cold that puts the stress on our elderly could be catastrophic. And sometimes, you know, they don't want to bother, I mean, when you won't think of your own grandparents, well, you know, who maybe grew up in a cold-water flat or whatever during tough times, they're tough, but they're also really vulnerable, so everyone, please check in, encourage them to go someplace safe and warm.
Yep.
And if you don't want to check on them, have, call us, and we'll send someone to check on them.
We absolutely will, we'll check on folks, and we'll, so, and I think I mentioned last meeting, but for the residents to confirm, we had two housing developments, housing authority properties that had no heat and hot water, those are back and restored and operational, those are significant, it was nearly 80 units of housing, it's a lot of people and really in harm's way. So, I'd encourage everybody, you know a family that you place soccer with, or you know something that's elderly, it doesn't matter if they're, if kids in school. Every once in a while, pick up the phone and ask how they are. Not a bad thing to do, I think. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Yes, I just want to reiterate my thanks, I know I've called you a lot of time, many phone calls with issues that people have raised to me. And I really appreciate your responsiveness to all the issues we've raised and, and the impact that you've had in changing some of the policies that Columbia Gas has had that have not been acceptable to us or our residents, and I think we've affected a lot of change, so I appreciate that.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next. Board of Selectmen meeting schedule, oh, that's an exciting one.
Next one.
I guess we have--
June 19th, something awful far away.
We wanted a vote on our schedule, we just, okay. Schedule's posted, okay. Motion to move into licensing? Motion to move into licensing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're in licensing. We just have two items tonight. The first is an application from Juan Morales on behalf of Pizza Factory for a transfer of the Common Vittler and Entertainment licenses. Is there anybody here to speak to that? Please, if you would? And if you could just give us your name and--
Sure, my name is Juan Morales. So I'll be taking over Pizza Factory. I believe we have a lot of people here that they go there. And, yeah, yes, I used to work there, and the gentleman who has a Tasso, he decided to retire, he said he was, he wasn't feeling well, so he asked me if I wanted to take it over. And I love this town, and I used to, I was here for like five years, then I, I opened another business in Welzy, a pizza place as well, and then I moved to Methuen. I had another pizza place there, but then I sold it, and now I'm here in North Andover.
Well, that's great, we're glad you're stepping up and continuing this. We've got in our packet a favorable recommendation from police department, the fire department, and building inspector, I don't see any conditions here. Any questions from the board?
Are you keeping it going? Great spot.
Yeah.
This has been, this has been a feature of us, as long as I can remember, so I'm glad to see you there.
And I really know the system, you know, like, I used to be the manager for like four years, so I really know, like, it was so, it's so easy, like, when I went back then, like, the computer system, everything's, the food, everything's--
They have a very good product, too.
No, I was just going to say, it's nice renovation in the front.
Thank you, yeah, it looks really nice, that's what I told him, too.
I think it was like the second one in town after Jimmy's down by, then Western Electric, it's been there for a very long, different name, but same location, yeah.
Same location, Jimmy's looks beautiful, I drove by there.
Well, I'll entertain a motion to keep the factory going.
I'll move that the Board of Selectmen acting as licensing commissioners approve the request of Juan Morales on behalf of Pizza Factory for a transfer of the Common Vittler and Entertainment licenses.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion?
Good luck.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
All right, and our second is an application from Jorge Di Amida on behalf of London Limo Services for Livery Services, would like here to speak to that. Please, if you would.
First time I talk in the microphone.
Just your name and address of who, please?
My name is George Almeida, I live 161 Massachusetts Avenue, they are digging my street today.
Okay.
I'm happy for that, and I apply for livery, and it's a pre-agenda based service, like pre-booket, basically, there's no business going on in my, the business address, like my home, so, from the long airport, out and into the airport, so basically, that's it.
Okay, okay. Again, we've got a packet here, everything is signed off, we did get the insurance component, I think that was a piece that we needed to pull together. Were there any other questions or concerns from the--
How many vehicles are you going to have?
Just one vehicle.
Just one?
And I want one, one open, that's me.
Yeah, okay, and you'll keep it at the, are you residents?
Yes, so we'll keep it there.
What types of, this is kind of your opportunity to get your name out to the public and what you do, so, what are your typical runs, or what would you be interested in, in helping people as they need to get transportation somewhere?
Yeah, basically, it's limo services, like a luxury car, I have a Cadillac, 2018--
I saw that, 2018, nice new one.
And it's a pre-agenda, like, you need the service, just need to call ahead, like that, spot like a cab or Uber stuff like that, it's just different stuff.
Is it trips to the airport, or--
Yeah, basically, to the airport and from the airport, yeah, and anywhere else.
Anywhere else they can, nice, okay, very good.
Well, are there any other questions? Again, our package is complete here. I'll hear a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
One comment before we move on to licensing. We had some discussion last meeting just about Merrimack College and sort of the one-day licenses, or where they're serving within the complex, and in talking to the town manager and town council, Egan, we're going to have, or we are having, sort of more comprehensive discussions with Merrimack just about the whole concept of the licensing, what it covers, and really kind of a fresh look at that whole approach to really improve, I think, transparency and to have, I think, more clarity, particularly now that the, we'll say the area of service is so much larger at Merrimack than it was, you know, five years ago, right? There's a, there's a football stadium, the hockey arena's larger, and of course, the number of students on campus and, you know, kind of drawing that line at 21-year-olds, I think is a, is a bigger exposure at this point. So, we hope to have more of a, I think, a more in-depth understanding of how they're service, serving, and what we're really licensing there. And so, look for, in one of our next two meetings, Council Egan to come back and kind of fill us in on that process, so that when we really go to that licensing next year and look at the one-days, we've got a more comprehensive and, as I say, transparent approach to that. I appreciate that. Hope it'll get, just as exciting as that right now.
Sorry, it's all, it's somebody you know, by the way.
With that said, I'll hear a motion to move on to licensing.
Motion to move out of licensing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move on to licensing.
Okay, the next item, well, moving to consent items, the first item is a vote to accept the provisions of Chapter 59, Section 2D, and we discussed this at our last meeting, the fact that at the Board of Selectmen meeting on June 7th in 2004, the Board of Selectmen rejected the provisions of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 59, Section 2D, which requires the town to abate taxes if the assessed value of the real estate is decreased by more than 50% due to fire or natural disaster. And given the impact of the gas fires to certain properties and the fact they were significant, we discussed rescinding the vote of the selectmen to, rescinding the vote of the selectmen when they rejected the provisions of this Chapter 59, Section 2D. So, I don't understand that, I didn't say that quite. Rescind the rejection, right? So that we will be in favor of allowing people to get an abatement on their taxes, given their lost value.
Madam Chair, move that the Board of Selectmen rescind its vote on June 7th, 2004, to reject the provisions of General Law's Chapter 59, Section 2D.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any sustaining? Are you voting on this, Rosemary?
I'm sure that, I have--
Oh, okay.
Could I just ask, is, how is this going to be communicated on, is there going to be, is there--
Yes, very good question. That's a really good question. I think the way we should communicate that, we've actually prepared a list of those people impacted, and have drafted a letter, waiting for your vote, and we would proactively communicate with people who may be impacted to make sure that there was some kind of site visit or other evaluation of the properties. We don't know who, if anybody at the 50% standard, who have taken a sort of conservative view and who might be, and the assessor's office will be sending out a letter to all of those residents indicating that, you know, setting up an opportunity to come and look at the property for the purpose of determining whether or not anybody would be eligible. We just haven't sent it yet, we're waiting for your vote.
So there's a process for them to go through that you're outlining, and it involves our engagement of our assessor in--
Yes.
--this evaluation?
Yes.
Okay.
So is that five to zero, two?
Yes.
Next item is to ratify the contract between the town in North Andover and the International Association of Firefighters Local 2035 for the period of July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, I think the firefighters--
The firefighters have ratified the contract. I support the asking the Board of Selectmen to support this agreement as well.
Madam Chair, move that the Board of Selectmen, I should say, move that the Board of Selectmen approve the collective bargaining agreement between the town and the International Association of Firefighters Local 2035 for the period July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2021.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The next item is a request of the Affordable Housing Trust to approve funding of $40,000 from the trust for a Mass Save program for seniors. So, I'm sure you all know about the Mass Saves program. Ah, do you want to speak to it, since you're on the Affordable Housing Trust?
Sure, yeah, so this is some funding that we'd like to get set aside so that we can support seniors when they go through any Mass Saves program, if there's anything that comes out of that that, you know, requires additional funding. It's really, you know, part of our, our mission is to support our seniors and to try to keep them in their homes, and this is certainly one aspect of that, where we can, you know, have an assessment done on their home and make sure that the home is energy efficient and that they're saving money in the long run on, on energy. And so this is just funds to support that program.
I think that's a great idea. Do we, I know some seniors are hesitant to have people in their home, and I've had Mass Saves come out, and I mean, it's definitely people walking around your house and looking in every nook and cranny. Will we be able to support, I don't know, having someone from the Affordable Housing Trust there to--
It's a super, they trust--
I, well, true, but, you know--
Well, they trust the Mass Saves people. I don't think we had discussed that, I can defer to the chair, and maybe she has an answer to that?
Yeah, we, we thought of that, and we've talked with the senior center, because they're more familiar with the senior center, and so we would have, if, if a resident requested someone to be there while the Mass Save audit was going on, we would have somebody there, most likely a volunteer from the senior center.
That's great, yeah.
So, yeah, in overall, this is, I think, a tremendous use of the, of the funding by Affordable Housing Trust to try to keep seniors in their homes, and to keep their living expenses affordable, and, you know, one way for us, like I said earlier, is to make sure everything, I mean, energy is efficient as possible.
And $40,000 should go on the lawn.
Absolutely, yeah.
That's amazing. Now, all the light bulbs, there's so many things that come with it automatically off the top, so, I think that's the other thing, $40,000 is just really, really a lot of money.
Right, yeah, and I think we're pressing it because we know that it's a lot, we know that it's probably not going to go to that amount, but just, you know, we don't know what the response to the program will be, and we need to get that messaging out there as well to the seniors, to let them know that it's available, and that it's something that they can, you know, take advantage of. And, you know, we've talked about different ways of communicating that out, whether it's the quarterly newsletter, or some, you know, some type of a different flyer from the city center or something, to get that message out to. So, yeah, we hope the response is big, and that people have the opportunity to take advantage of it.
Awesome.
Anything else to add, Madam Chair?
No, I think that's it.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the disbursement of $40,000 from the Affordable Housing Trust for the purpose of providing grants to the seniors for energy-saving improvement.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is our FY '20 budget policy statement. We discussed that in our last meeting, and I think we had the opportunity of Mr. Mailer or Town Manager, any feedback we had, and I don't know if anyone had a chance to, everyone had a chance to take a look at the final version?
Yeah, I mean, I guess the only thing I would, sorry. The thing that I particularly stands out is just the connectivity to our master plan. I also like, it opens up the door to sorting out the OPEB issue and that there's policy things in there, not just, it's not just about buildings or staffing. So, I really appreciate how comprehensive it is. And I hope people actually sit down and read the 23 pages because it's pretty informative, even if you're not a select person or finance committee. And I really appreciate the detail on involving really everything from the schools to the seniors to the policy, so beautifully done.
Any other comments? Another thing that I wanted to point out, we didn't discuss it in the last meeting, but I just, this is something that I had raised and I'm particularly excited about, which is talking about a public liaison. It says position, I think, appointment or responsibility is maybe even more appropriate for major public construction projects to ensure that accurate information is given to the public. Because I feel like one thing we've learned from the kindergarten construction and this gas crisis is communication to the public is absolutely critical to be proactive, to get it out there in a consistent manner, to have a person responsible for crafting the message so that it's consistent amongst, you know, everyone who's delivering it. And I feel like there's going to be so much more going on in the town in the next, you know, number of years with the senior center, with the middle school fields project, with all the MassDOT projects, that this is something that I feel is just so important to make sure that we're on top of communicating proactively and consistently and clearly to the residents. So, I was just want to point that out. Hopefully, people will read it, but in case they don't, I think that's an important, a really important thing that is maybe different and new, let's say. Anyway, anything else? No other comments?
The comment that I made at our last meeting, something that I would like is a new policy for new hires, in particular, new types of jobs, that we do a cost analysis of what I would like to see, but I don't know if the Board would like to see, that could we do the hiring as a contract-type of thing outside? Or if they are going to be a new hire, what will that cost us with all the benefits and so forth? That's what I was sort of looking for it in here, but.
This is, I would refer to this as sort of a macro look. In other words, OPEB is referenced fairly frequently in here, but the specific steps of how we close the OPEB gap are not, because that's what happens next through a budget document. So, I have begun, I think I talked to the Board last meeting about it, have started to develop the framework to assist the OPEB committee with very specific steps, including what I would refer to as a OPEB cost calculator, that every time we hired someone, we would put in the factors that would calculate the OPEB, which is current age, date of retirement, gender, and it would calculate that out. So, that every time we added an employee, we would know the cost of that. Because one of the strategies I am likely to suggest the Board, meaning to the OPEB committee first, then to the Board, is that we start setting aside the net present value dollars of every new ad, the OPEB, Tim will appreciate this, the net present value of the OPEB cost for every new hire directly into the OPEB trust fund. So, we're not making the OPEB liability any worse while we address the OPEB. So, I see that at more micro detail level, because as I mentioned, the Board, I'm going to develop a, I'm going to develop a set of recommendations to give to the OPEB committee, and that will be one of them.
I guess I would.
So, in this, it doesn't, this is more macro.
I know it's macro, but to just send it over to the OPEB committee, I would really like something that would be in something more comprehensive versus something here's the OPEB committee would take care of.
The OPEB committee has to report back to this Board with recommendations. So, it's not just something, I'm not sending it off to them. Ultimately, I'm assisting the OPEB committee in developing a, you know, what will be a meaty report on all kinds of steps. We talked about several in last week. So, as a selectman, you'll get that report back from the OPEB committee. I will be suggesting that as one of the options, meaning calculation of the cost. We can place, I'm just saying, this isn't typically the vehicle, this is a more, this is a macro-level vehicle, we're looking at OPEB, but that's up to the Board.
I would still like it in here just because I think it's a really important step that needs to be.
So, I'd need to know what the Board would want in terms of an interest and how we'd like to insert that in a vote, and I'm more than happy to.
So, a suggestion is to, before making a hire or hiring a new staff member, would be to do an analysis of whether or not that staff should be on a contract basis or on a permanent basis, right? That's what you're.
Permanent basis, because I think we all agree.
Full employee versus contract.
Yeah, employee versus contract, yeah.
Because I think we all acknowledge that our post-retirement benefits are, you know, a pretty big chunk of the budget, and we've got a big job ahead of us getting it into line. So, I think that we need to make a very deliberate, comprehensive analysis of whether or not that hire is something we really need, or should we do it on a contract basis so that they pick up their own benefits? I, you know, I think some, we should be open-minded to some privatization of certain types of jobs because it saves us money in the long run. So, that's what I had presented last week. And I was kind of hoping that it would be in this talk.
I just thought it was in our OPEB discussion and not in this, because that was my bit of confusion.
So, I guess I would just say to that, that the assumption, so if we're going to do that kind of analysis, then you, then both sides of the equation have to come in here. And I think that's part of the reason why town manager Mailer is looking at kind of bringing it this way, because part of the, the other part of the calculation is if you go contract, which is how do you quantify the cost of lost opportunity? Where do you, how do you quantify all those factors and some of those exposures from a risk, from an opportunity standpoint, when you go to contract? There's a very real reason why there are positions that we could contract out that we haven't. And I could think of, for instance, legal services, right? Which is, you know, we made a very conscientious choice to hire a council for the town as opposed to contracting it out. And some of that was economic, but there are other components to that. So, I think part of the fitting this tool in is that it is a tool, not necessarily a policy. And I think those are two, two different things. Because if you really want to dictate that you do that kind of analysis for every position, it may or may not be appropriate, and it may actually restrict some choices. But I think the underlying factor, which is what the tool is trying to get at, which is to make sure it's weighed, I think is really critical. And, but let's see how that comes through and let's see how this Board weighs it. But I would be, I guess, hesitant at this point to put, to draw a line and say, we're going to absolutely do this calculation everywhere? Let's get to that point and have that discussion to see if that's really an appropriate way to implement the tool as opposed to making sure that we have that consideration. So, that's kind of how I would look at it.
So, what's the timeline for when we anticipate the OPEB committee?
We're actually, we're actually, you know, working with Andrew, so our next step would be really, Andrew's formulating the last pieces of that. He's kind of got something else kind of large on his desk, so sort of kind of fitting it in around that time. We appreciate it. We don't want to rush this, but I would hope that, you know, by the end of the year, we'd be in a position to have something come forward to us, hopefully, as a Board here. Because really, all the OPEB committee wants to do is lay out the options. It's not any, it's not any implementation, it's really just research and say, you know, here are some of the buckets, which we as a committee, by the way, can ignore, we can take issue with, but really give you an organized presentation to evaluate it. And then maybe there are other things we add, maybe there are things that we take out and then make our decision as a policy board.
So, a suggestion would be, because I think we're actually all saying the same thing. It is practical and logical to be able to ask the question, if I'm presenting in a budget, because, again, there's multiple facets to the budget. So, there's certain positions which would never be contract, you cannot contract a schoolteacher, it's just not logical. So, the first question would be, is this, I always use this word, I don't know if it's the correct word, contractable, can be done by contract, right? You're going to start with that first checkbox, and if it can, and we do a lot of contract labor today, Drash is a contract, and certain DPW services are contracts. So, we do a lot of it already, and I think I'd like the residents to know that we are actually comparatively, we stand in the middle of the lower, lower 50% in terms of the number of resources in a lot of our labor areas compared to some communities. We do contract a lot of labor. But we should, it is fair to expect that as part of the conversation about hiring someone, we should know the number. And I do think one of the strategies I'm going to present to the Board is we calculate that in advance, and we do set aside the dollars for every new employee into an OPEB trust fund. So, my suggestion would be to insert the following on the last page. I have the following sentence. Sentence says, "The town will also need to develop a specific strategy to address the impact that other post-employment benefits, OPEB liability, could have on future budgets." And I would like to insert, "Including calculating the OPEB liability of each new hire."
I'm satisfied.
How's that?
I'm very satisfied with that. Contract was just a piece of.
I understood you meant.
It's to keep our.
So, I would recommend if we're going to adopt this and insert that into the last page, and then we incorporate.
That's a good solution. On the last page, right before the conclusion.
No, but I mean, at the conclusion of the.
Yeah, at the very end of the document, right before the conclusion. Where he suggested to submit on, insert that.
Second line down from the top of the last page. Last word is budgets, period. And then insert, again, "Including calculating the OPEB liability of each new hire."
There's actually two periods there already, so you've got one.
See?
One less keystroke you have to do.
See, we're thinking about it, you just forgot to put it in.
I added a third. Yeah, they were very important. They were very important.
Okay, do we have a motion then?
I would approve on that as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Next, we have a request of the Patriotic Observance Committee to hold the Veterans Day Parade on Sunday, November 11th, 2018, starting at 10:00 a.m. to close the end, and to close the end section of First Street.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the request of the Patriotic Observance Committee to hold the Veterans Day Parade on Sunday, November 11th, 2018, starting at 10:00 a.m. And to close the end of First Street.
I'll second.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would just like to add to that. Veterans Day is celebrated on 11/11, so even though it is a Sunday, it will be celebrated. We don't go to, it's 11/11/11. So, just so that.
It will be celebrated on Sunday.
It will be celebrated on a Sunday.
Thank you for that clarification. All right. Next, we have a request from DCR to reduce 120-day notice period for purchase of land at Harold Parker.
So, this is, you should have the material in your package. This is land that is not developable. This will allow to make sure that that land is controlled by the DCR and protected and it's non-developable status. So, I recommend we support waiving the 120-day period.
What's it looking to close, again?
Do you have the closing date specific?
I think it was June.
Do it specifically.
In order to acquire prior to June 30th.
So, formal closing would be no later than June 30th? I think they're trying to get it done before then. We bump into these on occasion with land that's, you know, right on the buffer between Harold Parker and Town on Land.
Are we actively looking at? I'm just kind of curious. If you're talking about open land earlier, it just sort of opens up the question about, is there active interest in trying to do this, to create these buffers, or are they kind of only as they come up?
Yeah, I don't, you know, we're fortunate that we have a lot of strategic partners as it relates to open space. We have trustees of the reservation, we have Essex County Green Belt, and often, they're coming to us because they're identifying the kinds of land that provides of the buffers and, you know, protecting land. We did so up near Smolak Farms, it was a big acquisition some time ago with a restriction on it, and the DCR is another partner with us on those. So, we're fortunate that the buffers are mostly created already in fairness, but on occasion, those groups are the ones proactively looking at our spaces to make sure that they're being protected. And then we evaluate those on a case-by-case, a little bit of a different one, and that it's, you know, privately-owned property with no value. And so, this is a little different, and they get to expand upon what they control at probably nominal cost because it has no buildable value. So, we don't, we don't do a lot of aggressive research into this because, quite frankly, we've protected most of the open spaces with long-term CRs or conservation restrictions. And so, we don't typically find that we need to do that. That work has been done by our predecessors and done very well.
You just sort of clicked with me thinking about the master plan and just sort of, you know, this one way to kind of mark that down as a little note, you know? How can we leverage our master plan in looking at this?
Absolutely, and we'll look at that. We have an open space plan as a component of that, and there's some really great stories with that. The Edgewood Development, in which they acquired four acres and left behind for a permanent CR, 16 acres of the Rockwell property behind it, again, the, what I call Bruin, which is off by where, I think it was 150 acres, 75 in North Andover and 75 in Boxford. And so, we're just finding that through the actions of Conservation Commission, our own staff, CPC, we may not have sort of a specific plan, but I find that we're managing those processes in a way that we're protecting our assets well. But we will look at that as part of the open space plan.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the request of the DCR to reduce the 120-day notice period for the purchase of a property off of Campbell Road as presented.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item is the winter parking ban.
Favorite, it's like voting on Halloween. The thing we don't vote on is Christmas. The, I would say, because I didn't bring it up in communication, for those folks, and I know the Board is aware of it, we are proceeding consultation with the police chief in Columbia Gas. We are moving forward with Halloween on Halloween. And we feel like we're going to take the necessary precautions. Columbia has agreed to have all workers off the street and have everything buttoned up prior to Halloween, cones around those areas which require safety. Police chief has agreed to have extra staff in areas where there may be any concern. But, one, we feel a fair amount of the construction will be done, and, two, steps have been taken to make people safe. It didn't seem logical to us to recommend back to you, with all the other disruptions going on in these neighborhoods especially, and on people's lives, that we tell them it's on a different day. Or somewhere far off, that didn't make sense to them. So, we feel comfortable in proceeding.
I heard a lot of feedback from people, they were very happy to, let's leave that normal for our kids, so I think people were happy with that.
Good to hear that kind of feedback.
You know, I was just thinking, I've got this crazy thought in my head, I wonder how many kids go out as a gas worker.
We'll leave behind some vests and some houses, be perfect. That's a good idea.
It is kind of funny.
I like that a lot. So, as it relates to the winter parking ban, we had charged this last year, as we tried to reduce the impact on those folks that are impacted by the winter parking ban. Last year, we made a recommendation back to the Board that we narrow that winter parking ban season to begin in January as opposed to December, because we just find it's hit and miss in December. And it gets, and given the fact that a fair amount of the parking ban streets are also streets in the impacted area, we thought we would continue that. We worked well last year. The chief has an agreement that we try again going with the January 2nd date and go to March 1st. Just given the latitude, the thing that's not in the motion, I'll ask you to amend the motion, to make sure that we have the latitude of, so, God forbid, we have.
No snow.
A difficult storm in December, the ability for myself and the police chief to call the winter parking ban into place for safety purposes. So, we'd recommend, we did this last year, we were able to reduce the season by two months. Residents were very happy with that, less parking tickets, which was positive, and people had a little more flexibility. So, we're recommending the same this year in consultation with the police chief. I would add to the motion that, and to allow the town manager in consultation with the police chief to extend the parking ban beyond the dates that are identified here, God forbid, just in case either in March or in December we get a particularly bad winter stretch.
Do I hear a motion?
Move the Board.
Would be amended.
Would be amended.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is town manager's report.
I relinquish the balance of my time. I stand here for any questions you may have.
You've already talked out for the next several months. We added all of them.
More, between gas and snow, we have to get rid of leaves.
Yeah, thank you. My apologies.
Yes, thank you.
I know.
I appreciate that.
So, I think what I saw was we're going to pick up through November, hoping maybe we can talk about moving that out a little further, give you more time.
I did receive an email, I forwarded that to the DPW director, and I will have an answer about a modified schedule in the next several days.
Great, perfect.
Apologies, he just didn't get to turn around to see if he's already responded, but.
Who else you got going on, really?
Doing a few things.
Cool, thank you.
Any other questions?
The leaves seem to be falling, although I got a big batch today, but generally falling a little slowly for some reason.
And the hours of the CER Center are as usual?
Yes. No change to the CER Center.
Any general selection comments?
Well, just to preempt some calls.
Yes.
Usually, we get calls about opening the CER Center for additional days during the heavy leaf rate days.
Yes, we do.
Are we going to preemptively handle that, or are we...
I'm going to look to see exactly what we did last year, which included the expanded, and see if we can replicate that to avoid the calls we get. Yes, I will work on that.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.